I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, before we have a motion to accept the agenda, can I ask that a new section 9.9 be added to the agenda for a resolution that was provided to the board before the start of the meeting? With that addition, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
Still moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, moving on, we'd like to recognize some GOB winners.
Yes, thank you, and good night everyone, and good evening, everyone. Can you tell what kind of day it's been?
And by the way, I already recognized them when you guys weren't here, so this will actually be their second recognition.
Yeah.
I didn't know them.
But with that said, it's one of those exciting opportunities we have and moments that we have to be very, very proud of our students. And this evening, we have the good fortune and the honor to acknowledge two wonderful Main Street School students who performed remarkably well in the geography. And to recognize them, I'd like to ask Principal Casey to step forward and maybe to the microphone to acknowledge our winners this year.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. First, I would like to thank the board for taking the time out to recognize our students this way. It's a wonderful way to show them how special they are based on the work that they've put in. Today, we're here to recognize the winner of the GOB, the 2014 Main Street School GOB, Henry Demarest. So, Henry, would you stand up for a moment? And the runner-up for the GOB unfortunately is not here tonight, Killian Daly. But I'd like to say a few things about the GOB and how wonderful it is in terms of the experience and the exposure that it gives to students. And tonight, I found out it also gives that experience and exposure to their families because Henry shared with me that he and his brother Miles, who's with him and who's in third grade, worked on the GOB preparation together and shared the information with their whole family. So, the scope of the GOB is even wider than I had known before tonight. We are so proud of the students at Main Street School because when these contests present themselves, they really vigorously enjoy participating in them. So, for the GOB this year, we had 153 students who chose to participate in the pre-B. And then, once the pre-B was completed, we had 20 students who were finalists. So, of those 20 students, we have Henry and Killian, who were the number-one and number-two winners in that contest. I'm always so impressed with how much students share with me and with each other about what they learn in this process. It's amazing how proud they are to bring in books that they're reading, to talk about what they've learned. Henry was sharing with me tonight about things that he was surprised about, to really learn where all the different countries in the world are, which is a huge task in itself. So, I'm so proud of them, and I say this, I know, all the time, but it's so true. One of the very special things, I think, about Main Street School is the way that the students there support each other. And I think that's the only way that those 20 students could get up on the stage and be comfortable doing that in front of an entire student body, knowing that all the students in the audience were cheering them on. And Henry and Killian, when it came down to the end, were cheering each other on right to the very end of the contest. So, congratulations. I'd like to thank the PTSA for their support in this venture, for the trophies and the T-shirts and all of the ribbons and certificates that they support us with. Also, I'd like to mention Chris Barry and Storm Field, who were our moderators in the contest, and the teachers who were the judges, Jackie Richardson, Ronnie Alpert, and all of the people who participated in it. So, congratulations, Henry. We're so proud of you. And I just told him, Mr. Sotile, that there is actually a GOB in the middle school, which he's all ready for. So, congratulations, and thank you all for your support.
So, while we're certainly disappointed that Killian is unable to be here tonight, we're proud to acknowledge Henry and his great accomplishments. Henry, not only you probably have the deepest knowledge base when it comes to geography in this room, but I think you're one of the best dressed gentlemen in the room. So, with that said, I'd like to invite you to come forward and receive the certificate from the Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Good job, Henry.
Congratulations.
And he's the most enthusiastic smiler in the room.
Well, good reason to be.
And his parents.
Very good. A few other things that I would like to report on this evening, and certainly, as our meeting started a little late, we have our apologies, but I certainly want to wish everybody back from spring break and hope that everyone had a great opportunity to recharge their batteries for this final charge of the two months in front of us. I do want to acknowledge, so it's heard on public record, that tonight, the board will approve the 14-15 district calendar, which had already been posted on the website. We want to thank everyone for their patience, and our delay in approving this was to ensure that our proposed calendar was in line with and compliant with some revised state guidance and regulation, and it is. So, please make note of that approval and the posting on the website. I also want to acknowledge last night's middle school, high school orchestra chorus concert, which was a little longer than expected, but an outstanding performance. And I hope that community members have had the opportunity or take the opportunity to visit our art show in the campus gymnasium. It's just truly, truly impressive to see the talents of our student artists, but also the great work of our teachers that has helped guide their product. I would like to share a reminder that on Monday night, we also have the middle school, high school band concert at 7:30 in the theater, so please, please consider joining us. Also, as a reminder, next week, we start three through eight New York State mathematics testing. Wednesday is the first day, so again, I hope students have good nights' rest all next week, no late nights, and come to school with a, certainly, a positive attitude, but having had a great, great breakfast. When we think about testing, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of debate that you can follow in the news, whether it's national news, New York news, or our local newspapers. And while maybe the debates and controversy haven't been as high-profile in our region of the state, concerns are there about testing. And we certainly have had experiences related to this year's testing, which I think are important to acknowledge. And I'll ask Dr. Core to speak to about it. Oh, my goodness.
I think we just wanted to touch base in between the ELA testing and the math, upcoming math assessments, just to acknowledge a few pieces. One is really to acknowledge the hard work that our teachers did in preparing our students for what have clearly turned out to be very, very rigorous assessments. So, you may have read some articles about a lot of the questions that have come out related to the assessments. And we could argue Common Core or not Common Core, but the assessments are Common Core-aligned this year. I think the bigger questions are, are they fair? Are they appropriate? What are their tests even do we ask kids at the higher levels, SAT test, where we ask kids to work in such rigorous, long periods of time, day after day? So, I think there are a lot of questions about what we're asking kids to be able to do, not only from a Common Core point of view, but just from a rigorous testing environment. And I think we certainly saw our kids were troopers for the most part, but that's not to say that we didn't see a fair amount of stress, some tears, some kids who really, you know, we're lucky, our kids take it really seriously, and they felt a lot of pressure. So, there's a lot of conversation out there about what's going to happen. There were test questions that I think some of the teachers felt, they weren't even sure that they knew the exact answer. Two answers seemed viable. So, it'll be interesting to see how the state decides to actually score these tests, because as you know, they don't score, they get them all back, and then they score them, and then they scale it. So, the scaling is based on what they see in the scores, to a certain degree. So, we're not sure what math, what will we face with when it comes to the math assessment, but we would assume it's going to be just as challenging. So, we look forward to seeing that. And the last piece I would just add is there has begun to be some questioning about whether we should really be linking the state assessment scores with teacher's scores, and whether that's really a fair evaluation of what our teacher's success is in the classroom. And I think on that level, we would certainly agree that that is not necessarily a direct correlation, until they figure out how to align these tests more accurately.
So, I think there's, you know, a story that is still being written at this moment, and we'll wait and see where it comes. The one thing that we certainly want to see our students do their very best on a given day, and that we believe our teachers are working diligently and providing a high-quality instruction for our students. So, we've seen that our governor has commented on it multiple times recently, and there's other advocacy efforts that are afoot across the state. So, I think we need to wait and see where this goes, but understand that there's some real question, and we have equal question and concern that you may have read or heard about. Two other things that I would like to share. One is to promote a program on Thursday, May 1st, here in the campus theater, 7:30 p.m. The PTSA and the Rivertown Parents is promoting a Part II to Parenting Your Teenager by Terrence Houlihan. If you may recall, Terrence was here earlier in the year and spoke to our parent community about teenage brain development. And based upon the success of that program, the PTSA and Rivertown Parents have collaborated in bringing him back for this Part II event. As we said last go-around, this program and talk is designed for an adult audience, so it's a good night to maybe leave the kids at home or get a babysitter, go out to a nice dinner, and come to a stimulating program at the theater. Again, that's Thursday, May 1st at 7:30 p.m. And then, finally, something I just want to get out, where it'll be recognized in my presentation momentarily, that after this evening, there are a couple more opportunities to learn more about the budget. On Monday, May 5th at 7:00 p.m., I will present to the village trustees at Town Hall, 7:00 p.m. that is. On Tuesday, the 6th, we'll have the annual budget hearing here in this room at 7:30 p.m. And then, the final scheduled budget forum will be Thursday, May 15, 10:00 a.m. at the Public Library. Again, there's plenty of information posted about the budget on the district website. Any questions, you can certainly email budget@irvingtonschools.org, reach out to a board member, Beverly, Raina, or me, we'd be glad to assist. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, if there's anyone in the community that has any comments on topics that appear on the agenda, if you could step to the microphone now. Seeing none, I'd like to move to the consent agenda. I'd like to pull out the newly-added item 9.9. Is there anything else that anyone on the board would like to speak about before we go with all of the consent agenda other than section 9.9? Kind of a motion to accept items 7.1, 8.1, and all of Article 9 other than 9.9. All those in favor? Aye. Now, with respect to 9.9, prior to taking the vote, is there any thoughts?
Yes, I will recuse myself from the vote.
I too want to recuse myself from the vote.
Okay.
Do you have the resolution?
I do have the resolution.
Just want to read it to the faculty.
I will. The resolution is, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education herewith denies step movement parenthetically increment closed per n on the salary schedule for employee number 310 for the entire 2014-15 school year, and be it further resolved that said staff members shall be eligible for board approval to advance to the above referenced step during the 2015-16 school year.
Just before you vote, one thing.
I looked it up online today, it's employee number 315.
Let's just clarify, 315 is the employee number?
Excuse me. The resolution, Elaine, instead of number 310, is employee number 315. And to note that Mrs. Kerner and Mrs. Cashkin have recused themselves from this vote, have the record show that. So, with that being said, all those in favor, a kind of a motion to approve item 9.9? Still moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. Now, I'd like to turn over the microphone to Dr. Harrison for the review of the 2014-15 budget.
So, good evening, and thank you again, everyone, for being here. Tonight is an overview of all the work that's been completed since January, the contributions from certainly the professional staff and the audience in helping inform and craft a very responsible, I think, exciting budget that will be, present many new opportunities for our children. But at the same time, we've welcomed some wonderful dialogue and discussion from our Board of Education and received valuable feedback from our community members. And in this process, we've really gone through and had that traditional, what's become traditional in Irvington over the past few years, a line-by-line review of our budget. We've done so here in a number of public presentations. We've had approximately nine Board of Education meetings dedicated to this topic leading up to tonight. We've had a series of open forums, and we, as I indicated before, we have three more already scheduled. But with that said, the district certainly has a real history, and certainly looking back over the last five, six years, and being real cautious and conservative with its use of the community's funds. And in doing so, we've had among the lowest tax increases the last couple of years in Westchester. And in doing so, you can see an average of the last five years of 1.37 percent. There has been significant cuts in the past. Those efforts were coupled with trying to reduce or contain costs. And unfortunately, when you look at a school district, the large majority of the cost is tied up in personnel. And along that journey, a lot of staff has been reduced. And you see the numbers before you, and there were some opportunities last year through the budget where these numbers were actually reduced by adding back some staff, whether it was clerical, teaching staff, and administration. But you can see that still, since 2009, nearly 20 teaching positions had been eliminated. Over 15 additional staff members, and when I say that, that's administrators, clerical staff, looking at custodial staff. We've had 18 high school electives that had been eliminated. And then additionally, we're looking at elementary and middle school programs that have been cut or diminished along the way. But our budget presents a bit of a different story. I think when we look to the 2013-14 budget, it was a time for the community to pivot a little bit. The board took a bold stance and wanted to override the cap, which was supported by the community, and tonight, I think we keep working in that direction. It's a budget that provides for additional growth in learning experiences, whether that's enriching experiences, whether that's co-curricular opportunities, or basic supports for our children. It's not eliminating any programs, personnel. It certainly invests in our infrastructure, it invests in our facilities. We're continuing to make repairs. We're painting different spaces in and around our schools to make our schools a more suitable place for our children to grow and learn, but also to make sure we're investing in the community's facility. We continue to look at ways to advance and accelerate programs, whether that's through additional materials and resources or professional development for our staff. We're continuing to invest in technology and trying to dedicate more leadership to be able to support our teachers' needs in the classroom to integrate technology. Again, we're looking to restore additional electives at the high school. But at the end of the day, I think this is really a strong statement to the community, one in which we are saying that we value our education, one whereby we are saying that we're going to ask our community to support our children and their future by adding some additional programs, but one that is also fiscally responsible, as reflected in the previous figures that I've shown. So, when we look at our budget, and these are many items that have been discussed along the way, we have nearly $600,000 worth of initiative tied to this budget. There are programs that reach into our elementary classrooms, programs that will impact every single child, but then there are specific programs that will impact children with need and provide services for them. There's opportunities to bring back some elective opportunities at the high schools, I said before, with a focus on technology, maybe to add some additional sections to minimize large class sizes that could impact instruction, plus your student learning experiences, looking at bringing back intramurals at the middle school, Main Street School, looking at making sure that we invest in continuing the school play, all things that I believe strongly will be appreciated and valued by our students and parent community. With that said, we look at where the monies are coming from, we look at our particular needs that we have, and we look how this balances out. And we look last year, we recognized we were almost $1.3 million over the cap, which received voter support. But this year, the important story is that we're under the cap as promised by the Board of Education last year. And think about it, we're doing all this with all those additions that I referenced before, $817 under the permissible cap. But in getting to this point, and this has been a budget process that has had its ups and downs and information and twists that came out along the way, recently, we were notified that there was an increase in building aid ratio for the district, which certainly is welcome. Anytime you say you're going to get more state aid, it is a valuable, valuable thing. But so, what does that do? There's a couple implications. One, as you can see from the top item here on this particular slide, it lowers our tax cap by over $216,000. So, the first time I heard that, I have to be honest, I panicked a little bit, and then Beverly settled me down and said, "But that means we have equal part increase in our revenue from state aid." So, at the end of the day, there's good news. The cap might be lower, but our revenue from state aid is increasing, so there's a positive impact for our community, meaning that we can still balance the budget, we still have the same bottom line, but in doing so, we need to raise less money, $216,000 less from the local tax levy. So, in doing so, we can take a look at what this means. Previously, in our last discussion, we're looking at an estimated tax rate increase of 3.31 percent, and now, we're looking at a figure of 2.91 percent, a little friendlier to our taxpayers here in the community. Again, a quick review of where we are, our five-year tax levy history. We can see certainly where the tax rate increases have been and the tax, average tax budget-to-budget increase. Certainly notable that we're looking at the lowest tax rate increase in the last four years. Here is an illustration to be able to see what your local impact may be on your taxes as a result of the proposed budget. And if we drop to the bottom line, the average assessed property value in the school district, a home valued approximately $750,000, would see an impact of, an increase of about $467. So, tonight is opportunity for the board to have some final comment, opportunity for additional community comment, and then, we ask the board to approve this budget, which would then go forward and be the budget with the tax levy identified, which would be then voted upon by our voters on May 20th, 7:00 a.m., 9:00 p.m., Main Street School. And again, the last budget forums that are currently scheduled are before you, and if there are questions, as I said earlier, feel free to contact us at budget@irvingtonschools.org or reach out personally, we'll be glad to assist. Mr. Grados?
Thank you very much. I guess before the board gives its comments prior to a vote, is there anyone in the public who would like to make any comments or questions about the budget? Okay, seeing none. I guess before I call for a vote, is there anyone on the board who would like to make any comments or questions on the proposed budget?
You know, as I think I mentioned last time, I have concerns about the writing class, you know, and I've, since, since the last meeting, Mr. Cohen and Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core were kind enough to meet with us in the curriculum committee, but I think I still have concerns about how that's structured. I would still prefer to have that part of the spending be deferred until we can better understand what the, how the existing writing program is delivered. You know, I would prefer to take what we spend on that and substitute one thing that we know we're going to have to spend money on, which is money to our tax certs, so we don't change the tax levy as a result of that. And I would really like to see more work done on where our writing curriculum is going before we approve spending more money on it. That's my view on the board. I have more minor concerns about the athletic trainer position. I still think that the logic behind that is unclear. We did get some additional information about it, but it really didn't focus on, it didn't focus on concussion management, which has really been the primary issue. It's been highlighted with trainer, and instead, it's, you know, there's a lot of other issues there. I also did not realize until I saw our note that trainer was expected to go to, basically to prioritize varsity football over other sports and go to both home and away games, and that was not something we had been told before. So, I would also have, you know, I don't think, what we do with the athletic trainer is make or break for me, but I also have some concerns over that as well.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
I would just say very narrowly that I'm very pleased with this budget. I think that it was a rigorous process that we went through over the course of nine meetings. We had a lot of productive debate, and I appreciate, you know, John's comments. I think, you know, I am in favor of the way it's constructed right now. I would make a request, and it does not impact our vote tonight at all. The request is just that since we've added a number of positions, partial positions, full positions into this budget, it would be great to have a sort of ongoing commentary from our administrative team as to whether this spending has done its intended effect. And I think in some ways, we obviously can't address John's concern now about the writing position, but over the course of next year, it'd be great to get periodic updates. I'm not sure what's the appropriate frequency, but certainly, you know, relatively regular because we are putting this funding into the budget. And I guess much like in the private sector, if we were to say, "We're going to invest in this new idea," you know, the people making the investment wouldn't sort of hand over the money and then say, "Good luck with it, I never want to hear from you again." So, I think it's really important for you on the administrative team to kind of give us feedback throughout the course of next year on the major items, obviously, where we're talking about spending $3,000 on a new desk chair or whatever, hopefully not a single desk chair.
It could be an expensive desk chair.
Right. But, you know, the significant items, I think it would be great to have regular updates on them. And I think that kind of feedback actually will make us feel even better about making additional investments in the future, to the extent that we need to do them. That's my comment.
Yeah, I think it was a pretty good process this year, so, you know, thank you for all your hard work. I just, I wanted to call attention to a few things which are inherent in the budget, but for maybe people in the audience or people watching, since we didn't talk about it, I didn't want it to get lost in the fray, which is, I think, is a district, part of our philosophy, is a commitment to small class sizes. And I think, you know, in addition to adding everything back, we also were able to, as we, you know, we maintained this class size in Dows Lane, you know, we were able to get the monitors in because we did hear from the community that that was important. So, you know, in addition to what, you know, Chris highlighted, there's also things that maybe we've had for a while that come up periodically, and I think, you know, I'm glad that we were able to address those and keep them in the budget. I was going to say the same thing on the new positions that Phil said, I think we talked about it the other day, which is, we always come up with the question of how do you measure effectiveness when you make these changes? And so, you know, I'd love to come up with a system maybe, and especially before the budget for next year, figure out, you know, is it an effective use of our resources? Is it, you know, are we seeing results with the kids and how to make that even better? Always hopeful that maybe next year, we'll do a little more long-term planning and prioritizing upfront, maybe over the summer. Comments to John's point? I do hear John, and I do feel that to some degree, it's hard, because I feel like we are, we do have a system, and clearly, even though it looks like in the budget, we're adding back, I... back, I worry that that's an easy out almost, and that we need to focus also on what we have and why we are faced with this situation now. And it's great, adding more writing is great. You know, should we be looking at what we're doing first and how to make what we're doing with our current program better before we add another class? I mean, I completely am sympathetic to that, I understand that. I also look at our seventh and eighth grade, and I think our scores on the state tests last year were less than desirable, and we do have extra time there, so that worries me. However, ultimately, I guess I come out that I will, I will challenge our administration to figure out a way to simultaneously maybe add in the new class, because I do think more writing for our kids is better in the long run. I just hope that we could also simultaneously look at what we're currently doing in the core program, and as well as look at seventh and eighth grade and the additional time and the core time, and figure out ways to make that better too, not just focus on what we're adding in. And, just want to see if there's anything else? No. And, you know, ultimately, I think I'm, it's, I think the number, the tax rate increase is impressive, and I'm happy about that. And so, you know, I think, hopefully, we can look forward, figure out more ways to make it a smoother process next year, but I thank you guys for your hard work. I did have one operational question, which is, talking to someone, and Rick's here, someone on the Village Board was saying that in the Village, they actually make a formal vote as to whether or not they want to go over the tax cap or not. And then they go through the process of, of budget. And I'm just wondering if there's any reason for us to do that? We never.
We cannot, we have different, municipalities have different rulings on going over the tax cap than.
Okay.
The school district does.
Okay. So it's just not on the table for us? Okay, great.
Correct. Because the general public does not vote on, in a municipality, to go over the cap or not. It's up to their Board to make that decision, whereas here, the voters have to approve it by the supermajority.
Okay, good. Okay. Thanks.
I just want to thank, I think, I echo Phil's comments about the budget being in very good form to present to the community. I think the increase in the tax rate speaks for itself. And I want to thank not only Dr. Harrison, Dr. Core, Ms. Miller, but, you know, all of the administrators, our principals, the teachers. People have to realize that this really is a bottom-up process for a budget to be concocted before Bev takes her magic pen to it. So I want to thank everyone and thank the Board for all of their hard questioning and for the administration's flexibility in addressing the Board's concerns. So thank you all very much. Can I get a motion, please, to, I'm sorry, I guess we typically read this in total. Can I get a motion on the following? Resolve that the Irvington Union Preschool District's 2014-15 proposed budget be set at $54,294,000, and that this proposed budget be voted on by the community at the annual meeting on May 20th, 2014, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM at the Irvington Main Street School. Do we have to do this? Do we have to do a roll call? Okay. Well, first of all, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you second?
What are we approving?
On this vote, we have to do a roll call, so I'll ask each of you your individual votes.
Approving the motion.
I approve the motion, yes.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Mr. Montgomery, how so you?
With regret, no, for the reasons I've stated.
Okay. Mrs. Kashkin?
Yes.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerner?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now, for the approval of the tax report card, can I get a motion to approve the 2014-15 property tax report card?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who we missed?
And I seconded.
Did we do 10 more?
Okay.
Okay. Anyone from the community want to speak about anything else?
Five, zero. Just to clarify.
Yeah, it was five, zero on the property tax report card. Is there anyone on the Board who wants to make any comments about the suit? No? Okay, our next meeting is going to be May 6th, 2014, at 7:30 here?
No.
And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Are we allowed to adjourn so early?
This is a record, John, this is a record.
We were so close.
So moved, so moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.